Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order. We inform it's 5:00 PM. Start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Library of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to read the land acknowledgement station. Statement. The Pima County Public Library acknowledges the sovereignty of Native Nations and acknowledges the 22 federally recognized Indigenous tribes of the state of Arizona and those who inhabit Pima County. We honor the vast and often unrecognized contributions and sacrifices of Indigenous people and are conscious of the ongoing experience of inequality and political invisibility. In partnership with Native Nations, PCPL advocates for full access to its educational, informational, and recreational resources. We're having today a special meeting of the Library Advisory Board. A special meeting happens when three members of the board request one, and that's what has happened today. It was Sharon, John, and Craig who requested the meeting. They included in their request topics that they'd like to see discussed, and those will be incorporated into the topics that we have here for new business. And so, all the questions that you have were sent to the library and library staff, and so they should be addressed in those presentations for those topics. We're going to do the call to the public first. And I just want to go through again what the duties of the Library Advisory Board are. For people who don't know, maybe our job is to discuss and review PCPL policy services and programs. We advise and make recommendations to a variety of bodies, including the board, the library director, and the county administrator. We advise the library director regarding policy services programs and administration. We obtain from the library director information as we deem necessary to fulfill duty duties, which I think this is a great example of. And we can prepare and submit reports as may be requested by the PCPL board. We're going to do the call of the public first. The public have a right to attend, listen, tape, record, and videotape the meeting. The public has no right to speak or disrupt the meeting. Obviously, during the call of the public, everyone will be recognized and have three minutes to speak. I am asking that you limit your speaking to three minutes. Just so that you're prepared, the board may respond to criticism, ask staff to review an item, or ask that an item be placed on a future agenda, but we cannot engage in dialogue with the presenters or collectively discuss, consider, or decide an item that is not listed on the agenda. Just so everybody's expectations of what we can get out of this meeting is appropriately set. I'm going to do the four in-person speakers first, and then we'll move to online speakers if there are any. So, Jo Reister. Reister. Is she online?
Online, I think.
Well, then, she's first on the list, so we're going to go to her first, no matter what I just said. Jo? 7300045. So maybe she dropped. Okay. Well, then, Logan Phillips.
Hello, everyone. Stand up here so I'm not speaking to your backs. Didn't bring the kids this time. They say hello. But here again to say how important it is, the work that you're doing, and how important it is that we support the staff of our libraries and the librarians, the incredible job that they do for my kids, our kids, as a community, and in general. One comment was made last time to the effect of, if only we could get over our nostalgia of what libraries have been, and we could be able to dream the future of what libraries could be. And when that future eliminates physical spaces that libraries exist in, and physical print media that libraries hold, I don't see that as wishing for some foregone past in the form of nostalgia. When I go to Santa Rosa Library yesterday afternoon to pick up our kids' holes for parish, the place was full, right? That building was full, it was being used, it was joyous, there was people reading, there were people using computers. And that's not something that's stuck in the past, that's right now, right? It's not some wishing for a foregone past to think that there are parents in our communities who do not want their kids to learn to read on a digital device. We know the dangers of screen time for young children and the inability to differentiate between entertainment and educational materials, right? And so, access to print materials is not something that is in the past or should ever be in the past. It's something that is used right now by parents across our communities, in my own family included. And so, I think as we imagine together a better future for what the libraries should become, I don't think we get to say it's hard to have buildings, we shouldn't have them anymore, or we have too many buildings, we need to have less. I think we need to have more, we need to have more funding, and more dreaming together to be able to support our librarians, the youngest and oldest readers in our community who still want to use print and still want a place to be that is not a commercial space, that is a safe space and a cool place to hang out. So, thank you for your work.
Logan?
Thank you.
Okay. That's Jo?
That's Jo.
Great, go ahead, Jo.
Good evening.
Can you hear us still?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay. I'm Jo Reister. Thank you again for putting all your time into this, I appreciate it. Last board meeting, it sounded like the futures report was more of a cry of desperation than a plan for future growth. And so, I was just wondering, you know, where the future plans are for the exploding Pima County population on the outskirts. I continue to have concerns about the giant gap between the levied taxes of $62 million and the actual money the library's getting, about $58 million. I mean, there's this big, big gap, and I'm wondering where those funds are going because, you know, you look at the ARS 48, 3903, and 3902, and it talks about what is mandated by the legislature on what the library is supposed to be spending their money on. And it just seems like there should be plenty of money there to continue maintenance of buildings. I don't know if there is a deferred maintenance fund or not, but I would think there was.
Jo, I think you're frozen, you may need to turn your video off. All right, let's cover a few more minutes. I mean, seconds. We could come back to her. We can, yeah. Let's just be... Okay, we'll come back to Jo.
I'm kind of in...
Oh, oh, oh. Oh, gosh. You're breaking up. Okay, let's come back to Jo. Maybe she can take her camera off when she rejoins. Brian Edney.
Yes, I'm Brian Edney. And until about a month ago, I was the secretary-in treasurer of the People Library Foundation, all member for number of years. My previous experience is chairman of the Summer County Library up in Colorado, where I did for many years. I'm amazed that $50-something million cannot cover all the costs of a library in places open. I was in business all my life, and when I retired, I formed a consulting business, so I helped a lot of companies really look at themselves. And I think you need to look at what spending money on. Maybe you go too far with the services. You do a great job, I love the library, but to think that there's not enough money around to actually keep a few libraries open, that ain't bad for me. If you need money for building of the pairs or not of new projects, why not go out to the business community? I raised $70 million for the Sarita branch for their outdoor performing arts thing there. It was easy. I mentioned people I knew, Freeport Memorial. They gave me $100 grand when I built up a new library in Summer County, the banks down there held. I spoke with them earlier, I'm not sure whether that's within your remit, whether you can hit businesses. Businesses love hardware and construction, because they can get the name on it. And I think that's something you really should look at. I really don't understand you, but I haven't looked at it in great detail. I'm sure there's a whole other thing there which will perhaps be slowed down, trimmed, to make sure you don't have to make attic flows libraries. I think that's awful. So, the only other problem is, I remember I had my questions at the end when I heard the presentations and the discussion, and maybe we can come back to that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And always possible to email the board at library dot board at Pima. All right, Margot.
I'll go. Hi, my name is Margot. I'm the technology manager for the Pima County Public Library and employee of the library, speaking as a private citizen and also a library staff person. And I'm going to say, contrary to many of the speakers so far, I don't think we can afford to function on nostalgia. And also, I don't think money is the answer to our issues. We have funding, I know that we have to have a certain portion set aside for emergencies or something. Why don't spend the entire $62 million? But these issues that we have are not new to the library. We've had facility issues. I don't know about deferred maintenance, but this building doesn't belong to the county, it doesn't belong to the library. So, the agreement between the city and the county is when their expenses get to a certain point, the county wants to buy the building. So, there's all kinds of costs associated with that. There's constant calls for coverage for lunch for our staff. And it's not about having more libraries or more libraries open. It is about people using our buildings in a different way. And we don't, we don't want to close libraries, but is it good for us to have a library open, fully staffed, when 100 people go in it in a loop? Is that, is that good stewardship of our money, of our staff? Should we be there because you like the idea of us being there? Or should we be in a safe facility, safe that we know is okay, that's fully staffed, that staff don't have to stagger their lunches because there's not enough staff to cover the hours? Because we know the managers are going out and covering lunches, or our library service managers, which are like administrators, oversee about five branches, seven branches. And on their lunchtime, they're going to cover branches so that they don't close to the public, or they're split-shifting their hours, doing their jobs in the middle so they can open and close. These are all the things that we're seeing. Libraries are great places, like I said. I don't think anybody wants their legacy to be, hey, I closed five libraries. But also, we need to look at the staff, the stress levels of what's going on. And there's a lot of data in the draft, but it's not just about data, it's also about people, we know that, and we are 100% public service. We're like the health department, right? We serve the public. We're not an internal department. And I also wanted to add that this has been done before in other library systems, but also in TUSD. You know, they had to close schools. They had to close schools that had low enrollment. And they have problems with deferred maintenance and things like that as well. And so, because you go to a library or you go to a school that was across the street from their house, and now it's closed because it was built for, you know, 600 students, and now there's 300 students, that's not even the use of TUSD's money or other students or teachers or time that sounds good. But you'll have other schools that are over and lost. And thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Okay, is Jo back?
Yes, I am. I'm so sorry, but it points up the value of libraries because my internet is not reliable here. Let's see. I heard both of your comments on deferred maintenance. And I just want to reiterate that the ARS was not passed to, it was passed to provide sustenance for the library, not to be a cash cow for other programs on somebody's wish list. So, regarding the closure of the main library, I haven't, I don't have the annual statistics, but I looked at the June ones from your last meeting. It showed the main library with the highest gate count in the system and also the highest computer usage in the system. So, why would we disenfranchise a lot of people by closing that location? Closing libraries because of staff shortages, I don't think will solve problems. The problems are, why are we having trouble recruiting professionals? I'm not looking for a job anymore because I'm retired from there, but a quick Google search yielded over 85 jobs posted under Arizona library jobs, and Pima County wasn't even on there. Or is it the compensation? Or is it the lengthy human resources processing that keeps us from snatching up the talented people? Closing libraries because of criminal activities doesn't address the issue of crime in our community. And are we going to keep closing libraries because of crime? Or are we going to communicate between the city and the county to improve conversations? These territorial turf wars have to stop. The library has long partnered with many organizations, elections, the health department, COVID, cooling stations, charter schools, public schools, because schools are closing. And we've been there as their right arm for so many things. And it's time to look to those as future partners, as well as being there from the beginning of the internet. We were sought out as a trusted provider and instructor. So, with library closures, how will this affect the digital divide and the services to underprivileged? I have plenty more thoughts, but I'll just send you an email. And thank you for listening to me, thank you for investing your time in our gym.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who wants to speak? No. Is there anybody online who wants to speak? Or on the phone? Okay, hearing none, we can move to the rest of the agenda. Amber, do I hand it to you?
So, first off, I'm going to let Dr. Garcia do a little.
Thank you. Happy to be here. My name is Nancy S. Garcia. I'm the deputy county administrator and chief medical officer for Pima County and the Human Services Departments. That is all the ones that have in touch with me and deliver direct services reporting to me. So, that includes the library, but it also includes Health Department, behavioral health, animal care. It includes environmental quality, digital inclusion, and a variety of other kinds of humans. It's really important to be having this discussion and really important to be thinking and giving fiercely on that topic. Let me tell you that about two years ago, I, when we were coming out of the pandemic, actually, as we were seeing what the national trends were in the labor market, as we were seeing what the national trends were in the way that people consume information and consume library products, we started seeing that demand was changing and that the expectations that people have of libraries are changing and that the needs of our communities are changing. The old model of people coming to locations for services absolutely is necessary. But it was also very clear and very evident, especially during the COVID pandemic, that a lot of what we were being called to do in government was to take services out to communities. And it doesn't, doesn't end just with a pandemic. It is a different service expectation on the part of a lot of individuals. From my standpoint, this isn't about dollars and cents. You know, the, the, the library, the assessment, the secondary tax that goes, that funds the library district is what it is. And this is not about decreasing budgets. This is about thinking about what is it that our community needs in order to be well-served. And it's clear that some folks are really well-served by the kinds of offerings that we have, by pretty ordinary kinds of offerings. It's really clear that there are segments of our population that are really well-served by the things that we are doing. It's also clear to us that there are lines of salaries of the population that are not served well by these kinds of models because people may not be able to access libraries during the hours that we are normally operational because people live in communities and neighborhoods that don't have an adjacent structure. Because of some of the digital connectivity that affect your library advisory board, they may not be able to access it. So, so when we started down the road two years ago, starting to brainstorm what the library of the future looked like, it really was a conversation about how to build something that met the needs of people, not just today, but that will meet the needs of people in five, and 10, and 20 years. That was the thinking. It's not about dollars and cents from my perspective. It's about trying to develop service offerings with regards to, or relevant to the community. The dollar figures get really ugly really fast. We have spent approximately $10 million in the last 10, no, $5 million in the last five years in terms of maintenance and support, just for this branch alone. That is not for everything in the system. Those are good investments, those are important investments. But we have to sort of think about, why is it that our, that our libraries are being used differently? And why is it that demand is changing? And how is it that we can sort of meet those needs? And does that mean putting services on wheels? Does that mean increasing digital access? When I started my oversight of the library, the vast majority of our checkouts were physical media. Now, more than half of our checkouts are digital media. There's a different set of expectations across our consumer groups and across the community for what that means. So, I think this is an important conversation. Trying to get whatever is the right mix of physical and non-physical infrastructure is important. Trying to reset expectations based on real-world usage is important and based on an understanding of what the labor market today is doing for libraries across this country. I think all of them are part of that conversation. So, happy to be here and happy to be engaged. I'm really proud of our library staff who show up to work every day and who do so with such professionalism. And I really think that, that breadth that they put together for discussion is just that, a starting point for our conversation about what the future might hold for this library. We knew it was going to be a difficult conversation. It's never easy. But we also knew it was a necessary conversation because, because we cannot sort of close our eyes to the reality that's in front of us. So, that's it for me.
So, I was going to cover this when I gave my comments, but starting in, well, going back as far as 2017, First Things First, United Way, starting asking the county to subsidize their programs for early childhood education. 2019, Chuck sent a letter in response to them, telling them that local tax dollars were not available, encouraging First Things First because of their declining tax revenue, less people smoking, that they should start looking for additional tax revenue. Then Chuck retires in 2020. We see in the 2020, 21 budget, 22, 23, 24, 25. I've read all the county budgets twice in the last two.
Two and a half.
Yeah, and I disagree with a lot of the assumptions that you've faced. So, repeatedly, they say that they're going to use $10 million from the library revenue to fund early childhood education in conjunction with First Things First and United Way. That started in 2021, and then it really gets firmed up in 2023, 24. And then Jan just reinforces it in the financial memo that she did in response to Supervisor Hines. "The library district does not have sufficient revenue streams to sustain a $10 million PEEPS program on an annual basis without significant restructuring." So, I'm asking you, are you telling me that this whole restructuring to reduce library staff by 50 to 100 people over the last years and the really lousy HR effort to recruit and hire librarians over the last two years is not related to the desire of the county administration and supervisors? I don't know how well, where they are at that. The secondary tax revenue is going to go for the PEEPS program?
Board member holds.
Hold, yes.
I can say unequivocally that that is not the case. I can also say, without a doubt, that the program, the early childhood education program, which is a program that was created by our board of supervisors, was funded in the way that it was, that the board directed. It was funded with ARPA dollars and then with...
Until this year.
And then with an eye towards sustainability, in part using some library revenues.
$10 million.
Library tax revenues. I would also let you know that, remember at the intervening time, the state legislature said that that was an allowable expenditure for library taxing districts. So, so, no, I understand that the timing is contemporaneous, but what is driving the decision on library services has absolutely nothing to do with the early childhood, with the board's early childhood education program.
Okay. I just think that this optics on it are very, very suspicious because money is not an issue for the library branches and to fully staff them if they use the 11% of the secondary tax revenue as outlined in my property tax bill. There's plenty of money for the libraries to not have to close. So, I'll wait till I turn it over. I just wanted to have that specifically stated for the public.
I just have a quick question. So, it sounds like the futures planning was something that probably lots of county departments were doing during the beginning of the pandemic or during the pandemic. This process has been going on for a couple of years in town, like you said.
The conversation that I started with Amber was about two years ago.
Three years ago, okay. And by other departments, I assume, we're also looking towards.
A lot of departments are looking at how revenues are changing. And the ARPA clip has provided a tremendous motivation for us to look at the way that we are doing business. Across the county enterprise, we're trying to figure out how to be more customer-centric and how to be a little bit less bureaucratic. And so, yeah, we're looking at a lot of processes. There are a lot of things that we did not do previously. A good example is permitting processes. How many pieces have gone online in order to do those, you know, bio-government functions? We transitioned a lot of services to different service delivery models precisely because, because we're in a very different labor market and we're, we're looking for, at some tough economic times, regardless of, regards what the secondary tax district is.
Any other questions for Dr. Garcia?
I have a question. So, optics are very important, and I'm not saying this is my personal opinion. When we talk about, we're going to provide extra services in the future because that's the way demand is driving it. And then, there's a quick, brief, like, everyone is closing three libraries. Everybody immediately jumps to, you're closing three libraries funding these services. So, I guess I'm asking a hypothetical for clarity. So I guess I'm asking a hypothetical for clarity. If all the staffing issues were resolved tomorrow by magic, would we still be closing libraries?
I believe that the service delivery model that we currently have is not the service delivery model that best serves this community. I believe we would still be having the conversation. Because like I said from the very beginning, I don't believe that this is about saving pennies or dollars or whatever. I believe that this is about thinking about what's the best way to serve this community. The proposal to, the proposed potential of library closures were opening statements of, or points of discussion were, were a place to begin that discussion in terms of organizing on the staff side, how we were thinking about our physical infrastructure, right? So we had to start somewhere. And so that was the task that I gave our library leadership team to give us some suggestions, understanding that at the end of these, at the end of the day, these are policy decisions that are going to be made by the Board of Supervisors. Nobody is saying that we're going to close library X or library Y. What we have posited is a framework by which you could make those kinds of decisions. There will always be a library presence, for instance, in the downtown area. The question is, is this the physical presence for the library? And is this current building, the current physical presence for that library? But, but really, again, it is about service delivery and meeting needs and demands rather than trying to move dollars around. At the end of the day, US Library Advisory Board, you guys have had fingerprints on all the kinds of services and been made aware of the kinds of things that go on in our libraries. If any of those are inappropriate, or if there's a good reason to get rid of them, by all means, we are absolutely open to looking at that. Because I think that it may make sense.
Just to clarify, the report clearly says by the end of this fiscal year, we will be closing handful of small libraries.
And the report, and the report also has a big draft letter mark all of those as a discussion document, right?
Well, the timeline between August and December is pretty short for public discussions. That was, the timeline was put together by me and I put the date on there because I was looking for relief for my staff in this fiscal year. A lot of the solutions that I had heard from people in the community could help us two years down the road, but my staff are drowning right now.
Yeah. And thank you. That was very helpful. I just want to say that, again, the optics is very scary. I think we have to do a better job in the community of really relaying this, you know, because people are afraid. And whether they should be or not is irrelevant. The point is, we have to be very careful of when we put that into the conversation of we are increasing your service.
Because, and sorry to interrupt.
No, no. I mean, it's great that the library staff develops their vision, but you, you know, in this community, you can't plan things that affect the community without being very transparent and involving them from the start. And then having the timeline that was in the draft, that just, you know, inflames people. So I don't, you know, it's great that you guys were talking about it for two years, but there's a lack of transparency. Board member O'Neil, we could have done a lot of things differently. Absolutely. And perhaps that is one of those things that we should have done differently. That the, we knew that whatever we did was going to be a lightning rod. So, so, so we wanted to have something that was relatively well-thought-out. And I think most of you will agree that the document, or whatever you might think about the strategy, is actually a fairly well-thought-out, well-researched, well-argued document. We wanted to have something that was fairly well-thought-out before we started that discussion and, and, and to use as a starting point. Because, because when we start, the starting point of, of, if we start the discussion by saying, geez, what are we going to do differently without having something to react to, I think it ends up being a much more complicated conversation. Coulda, shoulda, woulda, right? And again, perhaps that was not the best, perhaps that was not the best strategy from a communication standpoint. But the desire was always to have a starting point for a broader discussion. And I understand what you're saying. There's so many stakeholders involved. And as somebody mentioned at the last meeting, when this branch was, and this was built to be a branch, this main library, there was five years of planning. And no surprises, you know, we're moving out of a old, very old facility and trying to imagine a better place. But, you know, you don't just say, well, we're going to close the main library. You don't know where we're going, but we'll do it by the end of the year. That's just so strange. And there's people in this community that still remember things like, you know, clearing the barrios to build the convention center. It just doesn't have the right organic growth from the community.
Any other questions?
Sorry, one other quick question. Starting point is a great thing. Is there a timeline, even a draft one?
So we have, we need around a variety of different timelines that we have sort of circulated internally with the idea of Board decisions in the future.
That might help with optics.
What I would like to share with you so that maybe you often get us some input from there.
Because I think that might help with optics. If there's something to the effect of, you know, increasing services in 2025 and closing one library in December 2025, it might alleviate fears.
The issue, member fine, is that I don't want us to presuppose that we're going to close, I suppose, or close library out there. That really, we want this to be indeed a co-creation. We want this to be the starting point. Perhaps the Library Advisory Board wants to close Bear Canyon because of good reasons to close Bear Canyon instead of the Catalina branch. Perhaps it's not Santa Rosa that should be closing. Perhaps it should be, how were you, or Timbal, or whatever. So that, those are the kinds of, part of the reason we did not want to push out a very sort of hard timeline is to give time for the kind of feedback that will allow us to actually pivot and change the course if we need to. Well, you know, even in the memo, closing Santa Rosa and Maine without a plan, you know, that, that just seems, you know, it's just irresponsible.
27 neighborhoods involved. I don't need to go that way.
I don't know, I just, for the number of people that looked at that plan, it still seemed really. The, it's interesting, right? So, so, so again, nobody is saying that anything gets closed today. Nobody, what we're saying is that this is how we could transition into a new environment. And it isn't, it isn't, it isn't that there is not ideas of what we would do. We're going to have to do something with this building. The building, in terms of our costs associated with this building are such that we're going to have to do something. And we unfortunately have a lot of old building infrastructure that we're currently occupying. And what we've been doing, like you say, and let's do on 130 West, is we empty those buildings, we relocate those folks. That, those are precisely the discussions that we are engaged in, trying to think about where would it be, what kinds of locations would be able to accommodate this function? And is it a, is it a permanent relocation? Is it a temporary relocation? Exactly. You have some real candidates out there. Well, we have a lot. But as far as, do you anticipate that the county is going to wind up purchasing a building or what is your thought? At the end, at the end of the day, this is going to have to be a collaborative decision between the city of Tucson and the county. Because today, this building belongs to the city of Tucson. And we, we keep it under an operating agreement that says these premises can only be used for this. So we have started those conversations with our friends across the plaza about what, what would you like to happen there? Well, you know, what would, what would be, does it make sense to continue to have the physical library? One of the really cool things that we've seen in other communities as we've done this kind of homework for this are locations where people integrate libraries into residential kinds of spaces, mixed-use spaces, some really cool kinds of design concepts. Is that something that we would want to do in a location like this? There is a lot of potential, but we have to kick off the conversation somewhere. And that was what the draft was intended to do, was to kick off the conversation and to bring some of that creativity and some of that input forward in your deliberations and your retreats as, as Advisory Board. You have heard about staffing challenges that are known. You have been historic for more than five years. We have, we, our staffing challenges can't to date the pandemic. And I know that they've been discussed, they've been issued discussion. As Advisory Board during your retreats, during your conversation, you've heard about the kinds of programming that we've been asked to do or that we volunteered to do or that we've stepped in to do or been called upon to do. Again, you understand very precisely how much the kinds of stuff that libraries are doing has changed. And we absolutely want to be able to listen to your guidance and say, geez, that won't make sense, but not that. So that as we go forward, as we start planning for the future, five, 10 years down the road, we have that wisdom and we have that input and insight.
Sure. I've, as I said, I've done a lot of research since our last meeting and reading the feedback from the public. I'd like to share a scenario, and I have four topics that I see as the problem areas, and I would like to get answers, maybe not tonight, but from another justice.
So the things in your email will be addressed in the presentations that we have, but we haven't brought to you yet.
I just have to say publicly, though, a lot of assumptions were made in the statements that you made using pandemic data. And I don't think that pandemic data is reflective of where our community is right now, where we're going to be here as future. We're already seeing it across the nation. Employers still haven't brought their employees back to their offices. You have T E P's two days a week. Starting in January, you're going to have those 900 employees a day downtown. I'm guessing other federal and county workers will come. So I, I really push back on it, on what you've said about what's trending. And I just, there's just, those hard data points weren't made. The draft of the future, it was so sad. It just screamed stress and frustration on behalf of librarians. And the reason our library system is so successful and that people love it is because of the librarians. They're smart, they're responsible, they're caring, they're organized, they do what is asked of them, in spite of the fact that they weren't trained as medical personnel, they're not trained as case managers, they're not trained as behavioral health, they're not E M Ts, they're not professional gardeners. And whether it was because they're so kind and smart and they're like, oh yeah, I can do that, they became the pharmacist dispensing Narcan. They became the case managers handling a drug overdose in the bathroom. And I will just say, may come up later, but I will say right now, I think it's very unfair to pile all these duties on top of already very short staff. And until the libraries are fully staffed, I don't think anything outside of their job duties should be put in. And you need to, I think, somebody mentioned it, maybe it was Pat. The health department needs to step up, the fire department, parks and rec, senior citizens, your contact agencies of El Rio and T M C. Most, the four libraries in theory disadvantaged neighborhoods that you want to close, all of them have a clinic within, some of them within a few hundred feet, like El Pueblo. And others like here, you've got El Rio and others, you know, very close. So maybe we could stop asking librarians to be everything to everybody until they have full staffing, because it's not fair to them.
I can't agree with you more. I can't agree with you more. And, and actually, those requests came from the community to do those things.
I'm not saying that the community want everything. They might have a lottery ticket, but I don't want you to.
The other thing that I will, just for the record, make a statement, you read the, the, the draft plan as a, as a cry of frustration and frustration. I will tell you that I have sat in this room with our leadership team and I never saw them so energized and so excited and positive about something than when we put that together. So I don't think that it's coming from a deficit standpoint. It's actually coming from the standpoint of what is it that we're really good at in the library and trying to figure out how we imagine the future. And for me personally, it was, it's been one of the career highlights of my life, being able to work with this team and be able to energize by their vision and their enthusiasm. So I'll, I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. All right. I'm looking forward to hearing. I feel like I'm hearing a lot of things that isn't about money. It is about staffing. But if we had full staffing, we would still want to make these changes. And, you know, this is the first that I've heard of, like, people, like, I, I think such a direct statement about the exciting nature of the changes contemplated, which I think are less well-described in the draft plan than they could be. And I think also, a lot of it sounds prescriptive in that these decisions are contemplated enough to be put in a written form. And it being the first time that the public hears about it, 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 you have a starting point, and this is the conversation we're getting about it. So I look forward to hearing what other information we can hear to understand better.
Four. So Dr. Garcia really laid out how we started thinking about the things, looking at national trends, looking at cost of materials, different ways people are using things, our reduced workforce, how people are working differently. And so that's really where our, uh, plan started coming together. We had a great team, all of my administrative team are phenomenal. And I know there were, there was a question asked about the authorship. I think I addressed that last time, but our entire leadership team, so myself, the deputy directors and the library service managers, all had a hand in writing it. So that's that piece. I did share with you a timeline. This doesn't have dates of when things might be closing, because we've heard loud and clear that people want more time to, to hear about how those things go though. So the draft that you see before you talked about, the community survey that we've been working with a consultant on, that will be coming out. I should never say the date, but I'm hoping by September 30th, because I promised it would happen in September. It's almost ready to go out. Our library web team is working also with the county communications team to put together what's called an Engage page. It's one that the county uses for other information. So that will be out very soon. Actually, it has to be out by the time the survey is ready to go, so that's where the surveys go. So that will have information, it'll have place for people to respond to. And then, of course, we'll be doing monthly updates here with all of you and hearing more information from you. And then we heard that we need community forums, so we're working on that, probably starting November. We want to give October, November for the survey. Community forums will happen in November, December, maybe even in January. And after that, then we would start using all of that information to maybe make revisions to the plan that, you know, because it is a draft, all of the things that we'll be hearing from you would be incorporated, read in that and from the community as well. And then in January, maybe take all of this with a grain of salt, that we might be able to have some sort of a plan at the end of January to share with the Board. Take all of this with a grain of salt, that we might be able to have some sort of a plan at the end of January to share with the board supervisors. Um, and then, of course, that will lead into where as the budget discussions are happening. And any final decision or vote on things would have to go before the board, and we don't know what that date would be, so that's on to be determined. And um the methods of communication are listed on there. So that's the timeline, I wanted to talk a little bit about the main library in this piece as well. Because I had a really great conversation with Ken Bierman, he was a librarian who was on the um planning team. For the main library and when he first talked with me, uh he said when he first read the report. He wanted to know why someone wanted to kill his baby, meaning the main library. And um so we talked about that, he said after he read the report twice. And um he came and had a great conversation with me, he said that the main library was really built in this fashion. At, it was actually proposed to be double this size, but that bond didn't go through, so it came to half the size. And that it was meant to have um a lot of great collections, so. We were a government documents repository at that time, Arizona collection was expected to be big. All of these special art colle- he was the envisioning um. Fine Arts collection, those kinds of things that um. We had some of those collections and over time we don't anymore, but in many of that, those kinds of collections are now really the work of. University libraries and this library never was built in a way that could be a preservation anyway, so having special collections. You need special temperature, you need to actually be intentional about having those kinds of collections. So he really um, you know, he continues to follow library trends and he felt like um he completely understood. The the need to make this a space that's still available to the community, but not necessarily um the floors that we have now. And then um, I know there were some questions about our budget and funding.
But I specifically asked for breakout of what constituted the ninety million dollars.
For you.
Right.
It's like that.
Thank you.
So this is the pro forma. That we, the budget document that we developed, um gosh, a while back, um the. When we, when we first started thinking about facilities, actually it was a while back, we started looking at a variety of different properties and. He built new, he not, um and um started putting the the dollar figures together. So this is that.
So this is that, and a large portion of this, I'm sorry that it's on teal, but there was colored paper in the copy machine and I was. Little to reprint it on other papers, so my apologies. However, um you'll see that a large portion of this has to do with um escalation numbers, so. Um, you know, it could be less than than this amount of money that's down at the bottom, eighty six. Three thirty two, which I rounded to ninety million. Um, and if, so I'll just let you digest that again. Jessica, were there any numbers on this that you wanted to talk about?
This is much more detailed document than what I have, so, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, good question, what's the spread footage of this building?
It's in the top right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was gonna say ninety five, I I tend to round them.
The the other piece that I will tell you is that there's a, there's a range, right? Um, in terms of that and um and, you know. That range goes from the high seventy millions to ninety million.
If the county doesn't own the building, then why would the county have to pay the entire construction costs?
It's a good question, um generally when we um have an agreement with the city of Tucson that when we reach. Uh, more than fifty percent of the actual um value of the building, then it reverts to the county. This particular building has been a contention for some time because of the parking garage that's under A D. And so, um and do you wanna say anything?
I guess I still don't understand.
So, so it's it's a, it's a county building and under the current lease and operating agreement, we are responsible for. The interior, they're responsible for the city of Tucson, they, sorry. Are responsible for the the exterior, the facade, um and so any, any significant improvements. I.e. replacing an elevator, which we need to replace too. Um, need to be, would be done on our, would be done on our side of the ledger. At that point at which we exceed our investment exceeds fifty percent of the value of the building, at that point, that triggers. Us potentially owning that building, but these are points of negotiation and conversation with our friends at the city and. And I really do mean that, they are our friends and and we're doing this collaboratively. Um, we we did that with the Richard Elias branch, for instance, um and um. But it, that that's the way that the, those uh agreements that operating agreement and lease are structured.
And and that's been the case since two thousand and six, correct?
The case since two thousand.
So a lot of like replacing. Yeah, replacing elevators and so forth should have been like scheduled into, should have been baked into the pie all this time. And the facade we've known about for twenty years, it's always been a problem, so. You know, it seems like, why is this the year that we call it the? All it, yeah, over the top.
Well, part of that is that the last time our chiller was fixed, we were told that if it had to be repaired again, that we would have to close the building. And so it's to that point where they can no longer get parts for that and the elevators. And the elevators are complicated by the elevators that are in the library are under the county jurisdiction, but the elevators in the parking garage are.
But this is all kind of like old news, this would have been like in, hopefully in a spreadsheet continuing over the years.
We've been talking about this since before I was the library director.
So I have a question because uh I think it's in stated in the draft and then it's been in discussion of minutes. That uh the desire to close this building and have a much smaller downtown library was definitely driven by staffing needs. So that you could have greatly reduce the amount of staff that you had in this building. And then um I'm just, is it possible uh that the county and the city can start having some constructive dialogue? On using renovations as the opportunity to meet the numerous climate. Change and green energy goals that both the county and the city have, for example. At the T E P building, our elevators which go four levels down into the parking garage, so. But those elevators are just like a hybrid car, every time you run the elevator, they generate electricity, there's zero power, they they're wonderful and and. Uh, the same thing for your uh heating and cooling, that you look to be much more creative, looking to the future. And I I can't overstate it and hopefully enough of the public continues to give feedback. This building is much more than books and malls, this is a cultural icon for Tucson, it's a, it's a gathering place. It's, it's special for whether I just wanna come in and read the paper and relax on my lunch hour. To that I'm a preschool teacher and I wanna bring my preschool over here for story time.
You could say, it could, we could make this um downsized the library piece and use other parts of the building.
I'd come back around to, if you fix your H R problem, which I think is a real H R problem. I have librarians in three states, one of them has been looking for a job as a librarian in Tucson for two years. You do not post your library jobs on any of the national sites.
That's not true.
Well, I've looked, I can't find it.
We hired someone from Vietnam, we've hired people from Florida, Texas.
That's great because we were here, well, people around here have been searching for jobs and Pat mentioned it, that she was looking for postings. Was supposed to have what, twenty four, twenty six F T Es to hire right now? And you, the last posting I saw was for April and it closed and and it closed the closing period, it's April. We have to have a better H R process and when candidates are identified that they get hired, the national average is forty five days to hire somebody. Um, and the fact that it's taking six to eight months, I mean, your staff painfully shared how long it takes to hire somebody. That is just in this day and age of technology with Indeed and LinkedIn and all the national web searches. We can't be candidate first choice if they don't even know about this.
Sorry, is it part of being in the room, we all get to give some feedback or how would we go with this?
Yeah, I mean, I think Amber did give a response to sharing and then I know you have been prepared and so I'm.
Well, I, I mean, I don't have a formal presentation, I just wrote down uh answer to things that you asked, so. Since you wanted to bring up staffing, that's a little bit further down the agenda, but we'll go there. Um.
Well, if it's further down the agenda, why don't we get our, what are you now, first, you know?
Cause you have some good staffing.
No, I don't, I don't have any staffing.
Oh, you have underlined your. Yeah.
Sure, but.
Yeah.
Um, it's more about process, you know, all this media about rulers. Elevators and stuff like that, which could take us all night.
Yeah, we only.
I I just have a general thought question. Um, my background is rural state. Why is the interior renovation so high? A thousand dollars a square foot, what's special about this building, Pat?
The um, so the interior renovation is at three hundred sixty six dollars a square foot?
Yeah.
And that's the standard renovation rate that we use for um a lot of our county renovations, including Martha Cooper and Mission and Pimmel.
Okay, so it's a. Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Right, well, I think what we should do is have Amber present what she's prepared because that's based on the questions that were sent in for the calling from the special meeting. And then we can move discussion and respond to this information.
And actually, that was perfect timing on staffing because that's been on the agenda. So um, as you all know, we came out of the pandemic with eighty uh vacancies and. Um, we have done a really good job of working on those, um although. People may think that we haven't posted jobs, we have continually hired every year since the pandemic. We have, we're down to um about twenty, actually less than twenty. Uh, full-time positions that need to be filled at this time, we recently hired um eleven librarian ones, thirteen L T As. We hired someone, uh actually two new people in our accounting office, we right now are um. Uh, hiring a facilities person, uh circulation coordinator and the deputy director position that's open should be posted on Friday. So we're working on all of that, I have a meeting with county H R this week to talk about um the minimum qualifications that we have for. Librarian ones and and uh also to talk about how we can have some of our jobs open continuously. So for instance, librarian one, which is one that continually has turnover because even though we just hired eleven, we still have eight vacancies. So um trying to do some uh open and continuous kinds of things. Um, we do post nationally, we generally only post for two weeks uh because we get so many applications. So we are looking at all of those things, my H R manager is unfortunately out um. On leave for quite some time, so myself and um the rest of the admin staff and um my assistant. Are working diligently uh every day to get through those, so we know that there's an issue with that and we're working on it. But um, at the end of the day, uh. Um, staffing is super important, but also I think we do need to keep in mind that um you had asked about. Uh, the fact that our gate count is less because we have fewer hours and that's true, but if you do an hour to hour comparison. It's still twenty six percent less people in our buildings hour per hour. Um, than than prior to the pandemic.
Than say like twenty eighteen?
Twenty nineteen and twenty eighteen, yes. So it is down, I know you're seeing people in the libraries and so are we and we're super thankful for that. But if you think about the fact that we only have, we have less than three hundred thousand cardholders and there are a million people in community and county, there are a lot of people we're not reaching from our buildings. Um, talked about dog creep and you're absolutely right, I think there are things that we won't be doing. Um, I don't think that uh we'll act as cooling centers anymore unless that we have. Um, support, while we did have some support this year from the retired medical corps, which was great. And we can uh continue to do those kinds of things as well, but uh we cannot let up on our safety and security. Because that um, we are poised, we have a million dollars in our budget this year for that and we've gotta keep it going because no matter. Um, uh, what else needs to happen in the community, my staff and the public have to be safe. So that's priority. Does anybody have questions on?
Yeah, we mentioned professional librarians and and the report says it's hard to attract and I guess it's because of the salary. Is that what it is, what salaries?
So there there are a couple of things there, um you know, teachers, librarians, nurses, lactation, the the pay scale is. Is not what it could be, and so when we did the most recent salary study, folks did get increases. But um because we were compared with other librarians, so uh. You know, that's across the country, we did the standard, um. It is less and even uh our service managers who have, are basically like an administrative. Or like a regional manager don't get paid the same as other regional managers do, even though they're doing that kind of work, so that's a piece of it. The other piece is that there are um a lot of people, it was, ours wasn't the only place that lost a lot of people during the pandemic. Every day I hear of library directors who are retired, who have retired and are retiring, they're having difficulty recruiting them. So people have choice and in the past, I worked in this library system for thirty three years. And I started as a customer service clerk and I've had almost every job that the library does, people don't do that anymore. Um, people expect that they're gonna have a promotion within two years. And so they go into a job, we get people here from the library school, which is awesome. But if they aren't able to promote within two years, they're looking elsewhere and there are jobs elsewhere, I could go find a job. And any state right now as a library director, any of our librarians could go, there are that many vacancies out there. So um it's a a complicated thing and the other thing that the pandemic did is that a lot of people wanna work from home.
We have a relationship with the university's library school.
We do, we work uh especially with the knowledge rover program there, which recruits um uh Latinx and um. And indigenous folks uh or people who wanna work with uh those communities of color.
So um I have a granddaughter who's going to veterinary school and I know there's, cause it's short of veterinaries, of course. So they're offering all sorts of state offers, incentives for students to stay in in Arizona, have we offered um our, they're only. Um, only about half the states in the United States might have libraries, we have one two of them, so it seems like a great opportunity to create pipeline. Of libraries, I wonder, and I know you don't have money to give away, but have you ever approached the foundation for to see if they want to spend scholarships?
So that actually funny, you should ask that, the Green Valley Principal Library has a scholarship program that they have for um folks who. Work for the library system and although they may be changing their um. Their purview in the next little while, the library foundation will be taking over the scholarships.
So they're gonna be offering scholarships to University of Arizona library school students to work. Your, for what?
But actually it's for library, um people who are in the library who want to get a master's degree.
So it's.
But the model that you're describing is is a model that we are looking at and at that path, for instance, we have. Our our friends at PAC group specifically has created kind of this um, and I can't remember what it's called, but. Ambassadorship program where they are, they are investing a lot in first, second and third year veterinary students with. And and then uh making commitments to hire. Um, and and those are those very high dollar value hires. Uh, I'll tell you that something else is going on, um and that is that the, that the kinds of things that. There are plenty of library jobs in the private sector, working for corporations, working for. For um philanthropy, working for special, um you know, um private um collectors. Uh, there are plenty of of jobs like that and and we will not be able to compete with those kinds of. Uh, jobs and I think that the the other piece, which is, which is that the expectation. For this kind of job to be done remotely gets to be really hard when you have to staff. Uh, when you have to staff physical locations and. And and actually, as we think about putting our librarians out into the community to do outreach, to do programming, to take the bookmobile, to take our hotspots and our equipment. That's how that is kind of a different use for those same bodies that would normally be, you know, staffing a a physical site.
How much are the friends giving us scholarships? How much money?
That is a great question. I don't.
Yeah, well, I talk about scholarships. I'm talking about like maybe thirty thousand bucks or something to get some, somebody who's at the graduate school to work here for a few years after they graduate. I'm sure the foundation would be. You don't know the foundation board, but the foundation, yeah, they have lots of money. They might pay for something like that, you know, for scholarships. But ninety thousand dollars a year would break their bank account.
I have a feeling that the foundation won't be able to contribute more than the friends group did.
I mean, but scholarships won't give an immediate, right, an immediate impact to staff. But I'm still not understanding where is the lag in the hiring process? And why is it taking so long from interview to job offer? Like, where is it getting stuck?
So part of, I think, our biggest problem is that we're often doing these very multi-field positions. So when you're trying to hire fifteen or twenty librarians at one time, you usually try to interview at least three times that many people. So then, once you enter, you have them selected and then you're doing the reference checks. I mean, all, you know, you call, any of us who have done reference checks, you probably don't have. So all of that is, I think, will be alleviated if we're able to do much smaller recruitments. If we can do ones, twos, even five, it's not as hard, but when you're trying to do larger programs. So also, we just need some real efficiencies in our H R department.
That your observation is a good one, which is, which is we are scrubbing our H R processes here. We are scrubbing our H R processes across the county, honestly, because we need to be leaner. There are certain things, because we are government, that end up making things take longer, but but we do need to fix that. And I do think that that you will continue to see improvements in that process time in terms of, you know, from when we post to to when we, you know, interview to when we hire. But that is an area of improvement that we've looked at and I think you've created about.
I have a question for John because you you looked nationally at.
Sorry, I would have.
Oh, okay.
I'd like to. I don't forget my five minutes.
Okay.
But all these other things, there are people coming up. That's okay.
So I can quickly move on to opportunities for community feedback. I I think that is really a plan of the for the draft timeline that I gave to you here. We're expecting to get more feedback through the surveys, through the community forums, whether it be yours from all of you. Hope that you'll be talking to your friends, all of that. The one piece of that that I would actually like to hear from all of you, and I think at least one of you had asked about how if we are to close libraries, how we do relieve the trauma that that might have to those neighborhoods. And beyond providing services in the area closely, I I haven't thought more beyond that. So I would love to hear some ideas if you all have that.
Oh, well, I I have to say, I personally reject the idea that we have to close things. So let's not assume that's going to happen. But to get back to the community outreach, what is, I mean, will we get to look at the tool that you're drafting at this point? Or will we get any kind of look at that?
Sure, I can share that with you now.
Okay. And then the community forum, is that just going to be presented by library staff? And is that going to be based on the planning document?
So it will be based on the planning document at the time that.
Because this timeline seems very constrained and it almost looks like it's driven by the budget. So again, it's, it is money.
Well, if we're going to make any changes in the year, we do need to know by the end of budget time. And so.
The timeline is very tight.
To give you a different perspective, perhaps. So yes, ideally, we would like to have some guidance from you in terms of where this is going as we plan for the next budget. Absent that, it will be a rinse and repeat as we move forward. Right? Because because that's the way our budget process works, right? What you'll see, because because our costs have gone up, overall personnel costs, right? You know, how much we are compensating our our folks, our overall operational costs, our inflation, the cost of doing the business. Because all those things are growing, it will feel like a reduction because even though we're going to budget the same amount of dollars, it's not going to stretch as far.
That happens every year.
Absolutely, absolutely. Although, although depending on, depending on the sort of the, what the fiscal outlook is, we tend to be more and less liberal in terms of what we're asking to keep in reserve for.
Okay, but I don't want the decision making to be driven by getting it ready for this budget cycle. Because I think that's our division.
I second that.
And I want the public to be given alternatives, not just the existing plan that is generated internally by the library. I want them to see, well, this is what it would look like if if we did not have hiring problems and, you know, security problems. And still, I I think a lot of the candidates for closure, it had to do with housekeeping issues. Like, we don't have the security. We don't have the staff. It things that are budget driven. So I don't know that the community can just take that memo and react to that and come up with something they want. I think they should be presented with alternatives and I don't know that library staff alone can do that. So I'm thinking maybe it would be better to have somebody else do that process.
I agree. I have a question on that. Would it be possible? Because when you made your presentation, Dr. Garcia, you made some assumptions about what the public asks wants. But we've never gone and asked the public. And I'll use the example of storytime at Willmont that gets a hundred people to show up. What they need are more storytimes throughout the week and at different times. And the same period about that, we have four children's programs to sixteen programs for unhoused persons. Maybe people would like to have more programs for teens, more programs, storytime, homework help. I would love for you to do community forums and questionnaires, open-ended, saying, we have these wonderful librarians and libraries and programs. What would you like from your libraries? Because you're going to get more hours and, you know, but. Well, no, not the, not the, not the library cardholders. They're not going to be asking for that. Obviously, you know, unhoused persons are, whether they go to Salvation Army or the library or El Rio is going to be based on who's going to give them what they need. And but for, but I've just asked that, I think Mary Ann's point is excellent. Don't go in with the plan as a starting point. Allow the public to say what they want and need. I, we heard from teenagers that was just, I loved hearing how important it was, just as a safe place for them to gather with their friends. And I think we need to give the public, and back to the timeframe, I think you should have kicked this down to maybe twenty-six, twenty-seven. Because even the Himmel Park remodel, you've given that two years. So something that's talking about a district-wide restructuring needs at least a year of community involvement. And then we're going to have at least, maybe, I know we're going to have one new supervisor, maybe we're going to have a bunch more. And they need to have a learning period to work together.
And I was. That's what I mean. I was expecting a more robust community engagement plan and given the timeline that's proposed here. For me, this isn't cutting in terms of the community survey, which may or may not be done on September. You need to have a way to engage with an online survey if you're going to do it, right? So how do we? But we don't know that because it's not.
Engaged means, but yeah.
Like, I mean, it says engaged website. It says engaged page on the county website. So it's hard for me to see that there's going to be a real push for a non-online journey here. And I'm saying, great, you have an idea. But I'm saying is that what you are showing us here in terms of what is being contemplated for community engagement, I was expecting a lot more in terms of more than a survey. I, you know, I think it can be open-ended. I also think there are some questions that you're absolutely entitled to try and get answers to based on the starting point of the plan. But in terms of, there's nothing written here, again, because we have this one very short bullet pointed page about how you're going to engage with people in different languages. I don't know that from here. I don't know in terms of like the community forums. I'll say that one per district, that also seems incredibly unambitious as a way to engage the public, particularly in the districts where they're going to be the closures. I would say for every branch as a starting point, if we're doing starting points, as a starting point, a bare minimum would be have a community forum at each of the affected branches that are in the plan. And then the surrounding branches that will see more engagement supposedly from this. But for me, this is, I don't understand the timeline. I also want to apologize because when I said before that this is the first time I've heard people that the people are excited and enthusiastic about the plan. Renee, you're a hundred percent enthusiastic about the changes to the library. And I think you could get me that, right? Like, I just don't see it yet. And so the specificity, again, I said this last month, the specificity of the things you want to take away, pale a comparison of the specificity of the things you want to add. And so again, like, is this the starting point? The starting point you've given us is takeaways and and the start, the starting point I hear people wanting are, what else do we get? Right? Like, i- if this is about getting out into places and on the outskirts or or where people aren't well-served or the six hundred thousand people who don't have library cards, I don't see a plan in the in the planning document about how we're going to reach those folks. I also think, you know, you should take a note from how many people are engaging with these meetings. If this is a special meeting, people ought to go out and figure out that this is even happening. And so, you know, I encourage the library to go back and, you know, I would say by next week, can we get more detail on how the community can engage and how we're going to see it in different ways? Because I, I'm sure you have it in your heads, but the way it's being communicated, again, is a failure.
Really good comments, Chair. Ideas, the, and and there's actually a draft, our collaborative draft that has been developed with library and comms team. And with more specificity, that is still being vetted, that is still, we're still figuring out how to resource the kinds of things that we're talking about in that draft. Includes both for social media and non-social media kinds of interventions. And yes, absolutely, we owe a lot more detail in terms of the specificity. In terms of of some of the details of what the, what the add-ons are, there, some of them are actually in the report. The whole idea of of a hub for community outreach at Frank Bonzweiler is it was one of the things that that the team was really super excited about. Our affinity teams, I'll try to cue our indigenous folk. Our affinity teams have never had that kind of robust infrastructure to support them. And this is creating a focal point for that. It's creating a focal point from which our mobile services will be dispatched from. It becomes kind of the the coordinating part. It comes in some ways the 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 proof point of of what a future library looks like potentially, you know? And so, and so, yeah, I agree. What goes, what the eyes are drawn to are the things that are that are taken away. There is, we need to do more to articulate what is added and what we envision.
I'm going to push back a little bit because the the plan outlines some things, but doesn't talk about how often could the community would have access to it. So you have these read runners, right? But there's nothing in the report that says, in the draft report, saying, bookmobile, we go to these sites this often, right? And so there isn't anything people can get onto and be like, oh, like, maybe I'll lose Dewhurst, but there will be a bookmobile that I have easy access to four times a month. And so I I don't think the specificity is there. In terms of the letters to the to the incarcerated, there was something in there about like they will contemplate spearheading some kind of coalition. But I'm like, well, what happens in the meantime to the people in prison who need books, you know? And so, again, so I I don't think the specificity is there, respectful.
Those, well, like, folks, they're responding to.
What's the question?
Ref. Other information that we don't send them.
Okay, but it 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 still was, it was a contemplation of spearheading something.
Can I ask a question then that's sort of, sort of maybe the next step to that? Because I I agree, like, the part about planning about what could be amazing. We didn't map out in part because we wanted, we didn't want to map too far ahead without having had those conversations. So that's a little bit of that tension for us of like, we want to be like, here's what we're, here's amazing stuff. But also, we 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 don't want to presume that all that, right? So there's a little bit of that, which is like, we didn't maybe map all of that out. But I also want to acknowledge that part of what we're waiting for, or sort of like that conversation is, is having the director of that department, community engagement department on board yet. So we have a gap. So that was just really unfortunate timing is that that position is no longer there. We're about to hire that position. We also didn't want to map that out too concretely without a person in place. So it was really, really bad timing in that regard. That being said, to the point of whether or not the community, I do agree that the community forum should be handled by a third party. That it shouldn't be the library doing that. But I also don't like, I I guess my question is, is the idea that we should map those out more clearly and have people comment on those or should it be more open? That's, I guess, sort of my question from, what, what are your guys' thoughts on that?
Amber, somebody told me today that staff here at the main library is already packing up and getting ready to leave. Is that true? It wasn't the staff member, it was somebody who's not on the staff, but she said, told me that.
They're looking at all of the collections and all of the things to see. Because we know something will happen with Maine, whether it's a renovation here, whether it's a, you know, something will happen. So they're looking at, because this is a big building, it's not going to be able to just be done in a day. So they're, they're making, having those conversations.
They're saying, cancel some programs over the next few months in anticipation of being closed.
I don't think they canceled any.
It's not because of that.
So in response to tonight, you know, I think, I had it, go ahead.
So I was the person who brought up trauma.
Brought up what?
The the trauma alleviation. So I I have no clue. I'm not that type of person. It's just my kind of gut feeling. And remember that no matter how well we communicate, people will not be aware. One day they'll show up at the library and it's closed, no matter how well we communicate. And so I don't know what we can do, which is why I ask for people smarter than me to come up with an idea. But, you know, maybe something like if we hold a special event at the library that's closing once a month. And if that's part of the future plans to reach that area, it continues in a monthly manner so that people know before the library closes, this is what it's going to be like in the future. That's just what I came up with.
Thank you.
Sitting here, but I really don't have any ideas.
Well, I think back to the Sonoran Desert Conservation Plan and even just downtown parks and stuff. To have a community process that's less than a year without engaging social media and neighborhood groups. And there are a lot of senior citizens who don't, they don't use cell phones, they don't use computers, they just go to the library. Same with young families and what you're going to get in Gladden Farms in Ranha, where they're driving ten miles through heavy traffic to get to a library, might be very different than what you get in Green Valley. But that's why I think this open-ended and much longer conversation with the public is essential.
I found it again. So I think it's that in terms of this tension between the specificity, right, about like what is possible, we need someone to kind of guide hosts, right? Because when you say we want to close a branch or we want to drastically alter what the downtown branch looks like, we understand that, right? But like, I think we need more help imagining what the other things we would be getting in return look like. And so in terms of the community forums, you know, I think there needs to be time for both where, you know, I I understand that it's not necessarily a process of like ideating and like, you know, dreaming as big as possible because I I think that's kind of the the process that got us here a bit, right? Just like leaning on the library for anything, whether it was done in a, you know, a very conscious way or not. But people need to be given an opportunity to to really weigh what they're trying to decide. At the board retreat we had this year and we engaged in this exercise, I did not understand what we were really doing and what we were really, that it was going to be used and incited. That it was gonna be used and incited in this document, right? And so I feel a little bit. Like more context could have been helpful in having a different kind of conversation there. In terms of District Two, I I will say that, you know, the supervisor's office is concerned about community engagement. Um, you know, there was talk before the meeting that we haven't seen an outreach plan. I'm not sure that this constitutes enough of a plan for me to say that we have seen an outreach plan. Um, and that, you know, I think another concern is if if the library will be ha- will be allowed to have a budget. That ensures the kind of community engagement strategies that we kind of think are necessary in order to really understand where people are at and what they want. And that, and that would get us to, um, you know, a different point of this conversation.
Sure, Pity is, I I think your quotes are all really important and um and absolutely on track. And it's precisely because we are trying to put dollars with that much more specific plan. That we don't have something more formal to present to you today other than the the beginning of the timeline. But yes, there is more and yes, we will get more um to opine about. And there are dollars that are associated with that because because doing this kind of stuff. Takes effort and and takes staff time and 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 takes money. Um, so that is forthcoming. The other piece that I would add, because it's kind of been a subtext, I think it's been a subtext. This assumption that there's going to be a reduction in budget has been, has been at least intimidating. Um, and it, nobody's looking at a budget reduction for the library at this. That is not, that is not something that we are, that we at least, you know, at the end of the day, it would say for supervisor's decision. But budget is allocated to um the library and 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 they ultimately. Um, are the ones that have the authority to approve that or not approve that. But at least at this point, we're not contemplating taking a smaller budget to live for.
Oh, that's good. So, I mean, uh, status quo with possibly more staffing in the budget. Would be the request, because I I don't think you can. Say we're contemplating closing Emmerich until, say, the new regional southwest branch is ready to use. Like, that would be the trigger to close the temporary location.
Lots of ways to to do those transitions. Some of them are, some of them are.
That would help with the trauma.
Some of them are stepped and some of them are not.
Right.
Um, and so, but there are a lot of different ways to manage those transitions.
I think for the sake of the public input, there has to be an alternative that shows full, full funding with no closures. And if that's a possibility. Then that should be one of the choices for, you know, discussion, for the purpose of discussion. Because I don't think the staffing ever caught up with the number of branches that were open. I mean, a lot of space has been added without adjusting for, you know, a lot more space than a lot more program.
And even, and you can be more dependent. The library was understated and a bit underfired for years, years. And so, and so, you know, the the, and today it's my own side of the library, so I give you that insight. But what I can offer um is that, is that yes, we we need to sort of optimize that case. Thinking that we're going to find this cadre of libraries to walk into, to all of a sudden. Give us a full staffing is unrealistic from my standpoint.
Well, I guess I have a question that along the same lines that Mary Ann just outlined where. Um, the staffing was a problem even five, six years ago, yet you continue to build and open new libraries. And at some point, I think it was the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. The library system lost fourteen FTEs. They were just cut. I don't know if that was something that happened across all the departments. In short, it was just a few departments. Um, so our FTE count actually might have decreased from twenty nineteen from what it was before. So I think of Hemel Library, which is much beloved in a very well-to-do neighborhood. It's now two miles from the newly opened Martha Cooper and two miles from the Extron. So. I hope part of your thinking and planning is there may be some uh duplication geographically. And some maybe the hemmel needs to be postponed for two years till you get staffing levels on or something. I'm just saying. Think creatively about it.
We're absolutely thinking creatively that the the renovations and and the the projects that are ongoing. At this point, given the investment that's been made, doesn't make sense to. We wouldn't do that to the Richard Lea Library, like, we would not do that to Martha Cooper, we wouldn't do that to. Those investments that budget has already been allocated, those projects are un- underweight, those contracts are already signed, we are paying for those. Resources, absolutely. Part of the analysis that was done was looking at geographic distribution and what is close by and what is not close by. As we sort of think about that, um, that is one of the, the, that's one of the pieces with Subterroso. Um, you know, a belief that we don't own, has had some very important capital needs that have been unexpected. Um, and that is in relative proximity to other branches. But yes, these are very tough decisions. Um, and that part of the reason we wanted to start the conversation, like you said, whether we did it. Completely right or not, uh, we wanted to start the conversation, we wanted to put some things on the table. Uh, to at least um let you know what we were thinking of. Um, in order to be able to do this, doing one thing does not preclude doing. Staffing is just one consideration of the entire puzzle, right? Um, and um, but really, i- if we think about, if we think about what is it that that this community wants? What does that this community needs? I I really like the idea of of being a lot more vigorous in terms of getting, then you sort of patron feedback. Uh, across our different branches to inform the discussion and to generate new ideas. Um, in new areas for investment. I really think that that, that that's a fantastic idea.
Also, stakeholders need to be incorporated and and different age groups need to be incorporated and. You know, I I'm sure that whoever ultimately manages the process will do that, but it needs to be a real. You know, like a, it's gotta be a a a professional and and a third party. And that's part of the reason why we've retained consultants and that's part of why we're rolling out the, the. I think why we're rolling out the survey the way we're rolling it out. Um, because, because we we know this needs to be, that's why it's sort of an objective third party. So that we can, so that we can get the best information that we possibly can.
So do one last piece that you've asked about alternatives. We don't have a lot right now, but we'll be getting to those. But I did want to share that, um, I did hear you when you talked about um utilizing volunteers in a more robust way. Um, we do hope to add a volunteer coordinator to our budget for next year so that we can do that. Because when I was at the Green Valley Library, we were able to have volunteers contribute about. Um, two thousand eighty hours, which is a full-time employee. They can't do everything, but they can help you do it. But one of the things that we, um. One of the stressors with staff is that um only certain levels of staff can be in charge of a building. And that's where we've been um desperate uh of late is having in-charged people. So that's an important piece. I don't, you know, if there was anything else I wanted to share, but, and we, thank you. Oh, I did want to say, one of the exciting things we talked about is um a regional approach to our library system. And so as we talked about the Frank Delacruz being an outreach hub, we feel like each of the regions of the library districts could have. Um, an outreach hub as well, because it, having uh. That would be our model to start doing that throughout the system. So that's another one of the three of ideas that are going to come out. Also, um, there are uh libraries now that don't have staff um all of the time. So with your library card, you can access the building. And then we feel like there are some small locations, like the Catalina Library might be one, where you could swipe your card, go in, use the computer, get your books, go out. Um, it's a whole technical system and there are special agreements and all of that that happen, but it's a way to make things um available to the community. So I think those are the kinds of things that you're talking about in terms of um what's added. So those will be so we can push out. Yeah.
So my name, uh, question concerns around the, the process and metrics. And Nathan goes, I don't want to be more than five minutes, so people think of this. But planning for libraries would be, it's supposed to be a joyful, exciting process. People love their libraries, when libraries stand, and they would plan the health libraries, they have to come up with a plan for the future if they were asked. The American Library Association, A L A, and its Public Library Division, Public Library Division. Know that how much people love their libraries. And so for decades, they stressed the importance of including the public in long-range library planning. They have books, they have trade journals, they have conferences, they have webinars. Did actually just lay out the process libraries should use when they're looking at the future. Um, I think that's the way a public plan should be done. The kind of planning isn't unique to uh libraries, but library, the library associations really consistently encourage as much, as you've been hearing here, as much public input as possible. From community leaders, uh, government officials, business owners, advisory boards, and all other stakeholders, including non-users. You know, bring the public in. That's, that seems to be the best way, at least that's the way that the library profession recommends doing a plan. Um, like I said, it's not a unique uh planning process for libraries. For example, right now in the town of Oro Valley, where I live, they're currently doing a long-range plan. They have three phases. First one is community input. They have surveys and they have public meetings. They've already received almost nine thousand survey responses. Because the public really wants to help plan the future for Oro Valley. Then the second phase is to have community members work on committees with staff members. To draft some recommendations based on that input from the public. And then the third phase of the plan is to actually draft a plan, send it back out to the public and see if if your draft plan meets what the public wants. This plan, um, I'm sorry, it was developed and the recommendation was essentially with no public input, zero. Um, not even from this board, as as it was indicated, we didn't really know what was going on. We didn't hear about any of these recommendations until August. Library staff wasn't going to be either. I heard there was a meeting in August, but from what I heard, kind of like with the library board, everything came as a a big surprise. Like, changes may be coming, but specifics weren't even given to library staff as far as they know. Not even the Friends of the Library or the Library Foundation were told this, this was in the works. Basically, what it is, is it's an example of a small group of public employees deciding on their own. What the future library service is going to be for, whether the public wants those services or not. You know, you're talking about spending, you know, nine point five uh employees to do more outreach. Has the public been asking for that? It doesn't, you know, so far, all the people who attended this meeting. And people who just sent emails, I haven't heard emails, I haven't heard anybody saying if they want more of that. What they want so far is more library hours, open hours. So um, it's just not a good look. And as we've been hearing from public, it's not, they don't think it's a good planning. So I'm really hoping that after today's meeting, you can just start over. Um, not by rejecting the futures plan, because I'm not saying that the things in the futures plan are are bad. But I think we need to make it a public process. What we're doing today, just, uh, I mean, we're talking about all these different options. The the American Library Association and the Public Library Division have already laid out how to do long-range libraries. The books are probably right here in the library, or if not here, over at the university. And if you can't do it yourself, you know, I'm sure you could talk to the university librarians. Um, they'll gladly help you find what you need. But, you know, this isn't anything new. Libraries have been doing long-range planning for decades. Um, so anyway, so I would hope that today's meeting just to start to get back on track. And use the futures plan as part of a public plan, but what we need, well, I I think there is, so we need a robust public planning process. Asking for new public input over a few months, just isn't it, I don't think the public would buy that. Regarding metrics, one of the citizens at at the regular board decided to lack of useful metrics in the futures planning report. Where the numbers are used, like the number of library cardholders, the numbers lack any context. Are our numbers high, low, compared to what? That's what I said. One of the plan's main recommendations, the Community Engagement Outreach Hub. Office with no evidence of staff, who manages pop-up libraries and books by mail and so on, has no related metrics. With no metrics, how would the staff or the public know if the outreach hub is successful? What if, what is, what's the objective? Do we have measurable objectives? I haven't seen them yet. The citizen's comment about metrics prompted me to go to the internet, specifically the Institute of Museum and Library Services, I M L S. If you don't know, that's the federal agency that annually collects data on America's nine thousand public libraries, from the largest up to the smallest. And anybody can visit the website. So if you want in your spare time to look at library metrics, uh, you can go to the I N L S website. And see how our library or any library compares to one another. But anyway, I took a look to see how our library's most basic metrics compared to other US libraries serving similar-sized populations. It's nine hundred thousand to one point two million uh range. So in the United States, that's twenty-one public libraries. And within that group, um, I was very pleased to see the team accounting of the library's operating revenue was among the highest in the country. So we're number six out of twenty-one. So that's great. Even the wealthy suburbs outside of Washington DC like Fairfax, Penn, Virginia, and Montgomery County, Maryland. Uh, have smaller budgets than we do. So it's clear that Pinewood County taxpayers generously support public libraries. But then, to make the comparison more local, I use the same population parameters to compare our libraries to other Western libraries. And I did a print app uh for you, I think really enough to get all the way around the number four. You can share it, it may be enough for everybody, sorry, but. So in the Western United States, I did the same thing to Western United States, and they added T, it's just because, you know, Phoenix is Phoenix, like here in Arizona, right? Anyway, there's the print. I would change it because they're, even though they're bigger, just for your information. But in this comparison, revenue-wise, we move up to number two. Number two. Again, thanks to the taxpayers. Um, only San Diego County was ahead of us in revenue, which is good news. But when you look at the services provided, only one library, Fresno County, where you checked out fewer books than we did. And probably related to that, we provided, provided fewer service hours than all the comparable-sized libraries. So those are just a few metrics, food for thought again, but something that should be considered as part of the formal planning process. And for the record, more of I get this to show that I did share this report showing comparisons of uh public libraries in in Western United States. Anyway, I'll just conclude with one, one question that, I have a million questions about the report. But the one that puzzled me the most is, why didn't the library follow the best practices in developing futures plan?
We were using a different process. We were using futures planning, which is a whole, is a new way that um communities are doing things. It's something we tried to.
Like the university or?
What, what other?
What other things that you do today?
So the futures framework is um a tool that is looking at, we did a little introduction of that as a team. Um, briefly, and to be fair, when we were first having these initial conversations, our original planning process was looking five to ten years out. So in those conversations we were having with you, we were starting to look at this idea that. In order to be strategic about where we're going with the future, we're gonna have to start looking at the future. And the futures framework specifically um is actually a model that comes from um some of the places where um you have to innovate to stay alive. So it does come and is used many, in many instances in the business world, because if you don't, you 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 literally go out of business, right? So it's a, it's a, it is a different planning process. Um, and we were stuck looking at, again, what trends are we seeing and how are we gonna meet those trends? That specific framework is also asking us to look at sort of the spectrum of possible futures. So you're looking at like a really great outcome, you have absolutely all the funding that we need. But you're also looking at the outcome in which things don't go well, and what if we have less than we currently have now? So within that futures framework, we were aware that like there was a lot of opportunities. And that as we saw the trends changing, that we might need to reposition. So a little bit of what we're trying to do within this space is, you're, there are other strategic planes that exist. What we're trying to do is can we be at the leading edge of something and not necessarily follow, follow the traditional models? But can we actually get ahead of something? Can we be cutting edge? Can we be a leader in some of these ways and in some of these spaces? We see a couple of other libraries around the communities, um, around the world, finding new ways in order to say, hey, we need twenty-four-hour libraries. Um, in places where there's currently literally nothing. um in places where there's currently literally nothing happening there. There aren't any books in those places. And we're sort of seeing that there are a couple of libraries that are being that advanced technologically, that advanced strategically, and realigning it so that we're also following that. Now, the reality is, is that like, yeah, that's, that is something we're sort of trying to position ourselves towards. We don't get there in a year, we don't necessarily, like, obviously, there's still a process by which we sort of move ourselves, but also the community towards those sort of futures. And, and figuring out sort of like, how do we do that in a situation in which the strategic plan maybe needs to be faster than three years? Like a three-year strategic plan, that's a long time. And sometimes we need to think about, can we be more mobile, innovative, and future-facing? Now, um, I think what can be kind of painful about all this too is that like, we definitely want to hear from the community, but I would also just as a side note, like to point out that our, our librarians are working with the community every day. Like, we, we have engaged with the public every day. We, we're not making these decisions. I think if, like, if it was like the Michelin Tire Company came over and came up with the plan, we might be like, what are you doing? You're the Michelin Tire Company, you know nothing about libraries. But the people engaged with this plan, no libraries have been doing this work. That's a separate issue from like, do we also, like, how do we also engage the community? Because you're right, that's part of it, and that's what we're working towards. But the specific plan we focused on was absolutely about being something more innovative and different than what's traditionally been done. And whether or not that plays out perfectly as we look at futures planning, sometimes it does not. Sometimes you end up on the other side, you end up on the, on the, the side that isn't as, um, doesn't go as smoothly, and there are road bumps. But we're also in some ways anticipating that and understanding that there's that work and time and energy we have to put together as a community to understand, okay, do you want this innovation? And some people will say, to your point, right, some people are like, oh, I didn't realize that was an option. Absolutely, we do. So that's what we're trying to do is position this and sort of envision that future. But a little bit is us having to articulate what we see that future being with our expertise, with our knowledge and saying, hey, we see cool stuff, do you guys want this cool stuff? And then people might say yes, and some people are going to say no, and some people are like, no, I still want our, my, my building. That's, that's still true, and the, the plan leaves room for that. So that's why we chose that, that particular project, is because we want, we want to lead, we don't want to just follow. In, in the, in the industry, not in like with library services.
Well, I would say the public doesn't want to follow, the public is in favor of innovation and everything, but it'd be nice to include the public in the discussion and even branch managers, I understand, weren't even, you feel good about?
That's always been, I guess.
Is that right?
Yeah, well, no, not necessarily.
How many people worked on the plan?
So just as a point of clarification, um, we, the process, sort of understanding how this process rolls out and who sees it when, that part has been really tricky, and I don't know that we necessarily did that part of the plan.
But how many people actually put the plan together?
Well, there's, I don't know, seven, you have fifteen of us who are mapping out, we're sort of, again, proposing as like, here's the concept, what do you guys think of this concept? And that work of having them, they're now contributing to some of the, they're on other groups and sort of supporting that. But again, those conversations with, with them, that innovation, um, is something we're building in internally to do.
Well, it's just unfortunate, because like I said, the planning process for a library future could be a positive community exercise. And unfortunately, the rollout to this really made it negative.
Yeah, I mean, if I had a time machine, we would do this all very differently, guys, start with.
I'm curious, uh, like, how long ago, what, I don't know, it's two years ago, you remember? But who's decided to use this innovative uh focus thing from the private sector? Like, who originated that? Is that a Harvard review suggestion? Was it done by Google? And versus, you know, looking at established processes that were very effective.
So the KEDGE is the one that is innovating.
And school KEDGE?
K E D G E, KEDGE?
Where are they from?
Um, they're, they're an institution that uses, like, they're an independent group that uses this tool and are hired to use this tool for a product company.
And we've sent some of our staff to be trained, and now the um Arizona State Library has had three different trainings on it too.
Because, because it is cutting-edge about making, bringing, bringing libraries into the new way of doing the work. And so it's been funded, multiple of us in the library system have gone to get this training, particularly because it provides an opportunity for us to be on the cutting edge of libraries. So we, as a group, because we've been trained in it, a few of us have been trained in it, saw something that sparked our interest to be like, you mean, we could, we could plan for something exciting and fun? We could also think about, how could we get books to more people? Let's absolutely do that. And so to Dr. Garcia's earlier point, absolutely, that work in that room has been incredibly exciting because we're thinking, because we're, we get to focus on a lot of what's going to come. This is the reality of, of it rolling out, partly because there's also a little bit of that thing about staffing and maybe relieving a little bit of that pressure. So it did roll out sooner than we anticipated, and it did roll out with us, without us being able to plan for it because it rolled out as a surprise, like, it popped out as a surprise for us too. And again, if we had a time machine, we would do that part of it differently, and we probably wouldn't have rolled it out as soon as we did. We would still be working on it.
And we'll see in the next thirty-five years for some of these exact, yeah, concepts rolling out nationally.
Yeah. In terms of, get back to metrics.
Well, can you finish them?
Well, I just, I don't want to leave you, so I mean, you've got a lot of time to talk today, I only have ninety-five minutes. You know, uh, uh, people in Catalina are very upset about this, that you're going to, you know, talking about closing their libraries. Nowhere in this report did it even have any demographics, you know, is Catalina's population shrinking or growing? Actually, I know it's growing. In fact, if anybody just drives a mile along the, along the road, they can see that, well, Catalina is a growing community. So, you know, so what kind of plan would close a library when its population is growing? You know, the plan, you know, I, I can go through a page by page with you, but there, it's not a very well-together plan, I'm sorry to say.
I have a, one quick metric question. Uh, we're reaching about a third of the population of Pima County. Does anybody know how we compare the these?
You can look online.
I know, I just wondered if anybody knew off the top of their head. Is thirty-three percent a good outreach number? Is a poor?
It's based on library cards, right? Not just people walking into Centenary Paper.
Right. I'm just wondering.
Yeah, that's what I said, right, it lacks politics, it's meaningless, right? That word is meaningless, and, and I wonder, average, average number of profit? They look back and say, is it a good number or is it a low number?
Well, we want it to be all, that's our goal, everybody, yeah, yeah. I mean, we don't, we know that's not going to happen, but like, our goal, regardless of that, it's, it's the metric or gold standard elsewhere. We, we want to reach more people, like, we want it to be like, let's get half of people, half of Pima County with a card, let us do like.
That's right, that'd be great, to see that, it'd be great, right? We want, we want to increase our, our card memberships by X percentage, by such and such a date. And the way we're going to do it is whatever you're going to do.
Right.
Yeah, I just, you know, I'd like to see metrics, and there are many useful, many useful ones in this, this report. So I'd say, if you want to use that recording, get, you know, go back to the drafting table. Uh, but my recommendation would be, take a step back, and what everybody seems to be recommending, plan a, a formal planning process based on public input. Which one was that?
And what's wrong with the American Library Association that's being used successfully across the nation, yeah.
I've done it before, it takes at least a year, and you, we do forty community forums, and at the end of the day, we come up with what we knew before.
Well, that could be, well, that could be, that could be that you come up with the same things. But, well, for at least, for, if it, yeah, it could be the case, but at least then your, your recommendations have some credibility. Because just replace the Catalina Library or Pabla Libraries or Book by Bill. Because some seven people decided that's what they're going to do, have people know.
Is it wrong, you deserve more than the library it has? It deserves a bigger library built somewhere else, right?
In Catalina, yeah.
Yeah, certainly, it wouldn't be that storefront.
And I, I think when the public planning process occurs, somebody needs to give the context of this system being very porky and very never been driven, and, you know, first being a little city library, and then the reality of politics doling out branches, you know, kind of based on what the prevailing party or prevailing whoever was in, you know, you could get your library. And I, I know that is not a real great way to plan a library system, and that's why we have so many branches now. But, and, you know, I think it is natural in the course of a system that you're going to close branches, but you've got, you have to have the public along when you do that.
Uh, I think we've gone through all the agenda topics, I'm going to ask for closing comments at this point from any board members who are interested. Uh, I'll go first, because I got an email from the, from Supervisor Hands's office, um, so I'm just going to go over that. Uh, going out and doing a community survey and community forums with this plan will be rejected. And so, uh, the recommendation from the supervisor's office is, you know, come up with a better plan. Or I would say, you know, the more specificity so that people know what they're actually deciding. In terms of coming up with alternative plans, the public needs to understand what those different alternatives could be. So for Maine, an alternative could include getting rid of the third and fourth floors and giving those for private use, um, where Pima County becomes the landlord, and then, you know, still having some library services in Maine Library. Renovations that could easily be covered through prioritization in the pay-go program and/or COPS, um, or a future county bond, um, in terms of annual operating costs, you know, the cost of digital materials has increased dramatically, maybe looking at which of those digital materials are used more uh or most appropriate for libraries. So the supervisor's office is saying less in digital movies, um, so we have the resources for, available for digital books. Um, I'll say, you know, for my part, I am looking forward to our meeting next week, where I hope we see more of the contours of this community engagement so that we can uh see how people will really be able to get input into the process outside the confines of these meetings. And that, so.
Closing remarks, if anyone needs.
I, I would just say, um, in that process, I want to see how all the different um stakeholder communities will be addressed. And, you know, like, we all know, there's a lot of communities where people are, their information is just word of mouth, and I think the branches that are most impacted, that's the case, so the plan has to address that.
I, I'd like to, I'll, I'll float a motion here, just to see if anybody else is interested. But I'd really like to move this process forward, because I certainly agree with the library and the county that future planning is, it's really worthwhile. And so, you know, we want to move it along, and they don't want to decide if a future planning document, even if I said some nasty things about it. Um, so, you know, I would make a motion to advise the library to begin a robust planning process following the best practices promoted by the American Library Association and PLA. And include in the process consideration of the futures planning recommendations. Would anybody?
I'll back that.
Okay, now we have discussion about it. I mean, I, I, I don't, I, I trust the library in terms of why they didn't use the ALA process and that, you know, I, I do think a lot of the problems with this has been the rollout of communications, and I think we've missed a lot of opportunities here, particularly in this meeting, where I think we could have, this was an opportunity that we've missed to get on a stronger footing about how we're going to actually move forward. I don't actually have more clarity in what's going on. Um, I think that the planning that they're doing is already robust, and I think there's ways to build on it to make it better. Um, and that is my point for discussion. Other discussion?
I, I really agree with John that there needs to start at ground zero again in the planning process, using best practices, a hybrid model, using what staff, since they've been trained, uh, that they can incorporate some of those, uh, you know, maybe planning uh systems, but have it based on starting with community engagement. And this idea that we have to take something away, this maybe, and, you know, I would love to advocate that we keep all of our libraries and we still add the bookmobiles, and we still add pop-ups like we do for festival books, so we can have other special events. Uh, the county, probably in the next two years, is going to be state and federal money for uh the PEAPS program because it's a national conversation about childcare. So before, you know, hopefully, the supervisors will hit pause on thinking that PEAPS money has to come from the library revenue, because I think the libraries are an essential partner to family literacy, early childhood-like education. And having them be fully staffed and robust will only enhance what happens in the childcare world, whether it's at home base or a rural childcare center. So I really think that a hybrid model and starting fresh, I know you guys hate that because you put in probably six months or a year of work, but if we want to gain the public's trust, uh, they're going to, the optics of this is just going to be more.
Other discussion?
Uh, I just have a comment. I, I've made multiple ten-year plans in my time in the private sector. I'm not familiar with futures, and I'm not familiar with the ALA, so I'm abstaining from suggesting one way or the other. But as a Pima County resident, I would just say that when you make your plan and you choose which model you are going to use, please remember that the library is a service, not a loss.
Will there be any more information from the, you had some advice about the community outreach? Was there a group or a person that you were consulting with?
We had a consultant, and our, uh, work with her was just around the survey. So if we're going to do, use them for community engagement, it probably either to need to change the contract or get someone.
So right now, we're just discussing John's motion. If there's no more discussion, we can.
The motion is that we advise the library, I mean, I mean, that's all we do.
Right.
So we're not telling the library what to do.
Okay, John, can you reread the motion and then what?
He advised the library to begin a robust planning process following the best practices promoted by ALA and PLA, and include in the process consideration of the futures planning recommendations.
Okay, all those in favor? All those opposed? And then all those abstaining?
I just don't know if this.
That was one of the.
What we needed for moment.
Did Rebecca vote?
There's one, one late.
Rebecca, I'm tired.
I, I have not voted yet, um, I'm going to say no.
Okay, I think so.
And is Maria still?
Yeah.
Maria, do you have a vote?
That's her.
Is that Maria Iannoni?
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, let's give her ten more seconds, come on, you. Takes a while. Okay, uh, the motion does not carry any other closing.
Yeah, if Maria wasn't able to say anything, she just wanted me to report that she was displeased with the lack of, um, friends or, or, well, with the lack of transparency on this whole logo. So that's, that's what Maria wanted me to do, to report for her. But our next, in our next meeting, then we'll be, be looking at a draft of a real public engagement process.
That's what I requested.
Thursday.
A draft, not, don't roll it out and then ask us, please.
Well, I mean, the survey will be out by then.
I, I think until, until some external stakeholders, whether it's supervisor, staff, or some, I mean, how do we know that the survey is going to be?
I'll send the survey to you tomorrow. I don't request, I would, we can survey any kind of one. So I would request that you not put a stop on the survey, because we promised to get it out now.
Well, I guess my concern is, so like, the survey that got sent out about board member resources, I've been doing surveys for Points of Light in the United Way for forty-seven years, it was a terrible survey.
That was just simply different.
I know, but I worry about, we, this has been done and it closed, and I don't want to shred more public credibility or they put the.
But the survey going out now also doesn't preclude future surveys.
Exactly.
Right, unless it sets the wrong tone or ticks off a bunch of stakeholders, and then we've got more.
You're saying, let's make as many good steps as possible, without making more mistakes.
Insurance, I'd rather postpone the survey by a month and make sure that it, is that, is not going to be controversial.
Motion?
Yes, I moved that the survey, the public survey be postponed for at least a month until the advisory board and perhaps some other major external stakeholders have a review about, do they feel like it, it's going to?
But who do you mean by external majors?
I don't know, maybe there's somebody like at Oro Valley who's in the process of having a very successful futures planning. The county has done many futures.
I'm just trying to get a specific motion so we know what we're.
Well, I just would like to postpone.
I just would like to postpone the survey going out for at least a month. Until the advisory board has a comfort level that, you know, create more controversy. That's my motion.
Is there a second? I'll swipe in then. Okay.
Can I ask for clarification?
Yeah.
Are you asking for a motion for the advisory board to approve the community survey?
Not, not approve it or disapprove it, just to give feedback. Because we, you know, a lot of us do have other networks that we're part of and getting feedback from people. And I just don't want to create more controversy with a survey that we're reading. And, and just to have more people eyes on it to give feedback and then, you know, the library district will do what they're going to do.
Other comments, discussion?
You can give some positive, positive, yeah, that survey whenever you send it out, saying or response to the public's response to the plan, future plan, whatever. If you decide you're a public servant, I mean, that's. Yeah, that's positive.
Rebecca?
Yeah, have we, have, since I'm not there, I'm not sure what was passed out, but have we seen the contents of the survey yet?
No, no.
Remember, we'll send it tomorrow.
Okay.
I'm hesitant to.
Sorry, if we're able to see at least the questions on the survey, I think maybe we might find that it's. Because from, I, I think if we saw what was on it, then we would have a better idea. Because I believe the survey was, the main purpose of it was to find out what kind of services are being used. And what's most important to the community in terms of services. Not necessarily saying disseminating information about what's on the plan, but just asking what's important to them. Is that correct, Amber?
That's correct.
And so my motion was just to not rush it to have it go out by the 30th. But rather to take an extra, you know, we have another meeting next week. But take time to at least let people review it, ask questions before it goes live.
I think the sticking point for me, well, I don't want to, I'm hesitant to slow down this process anymore than it's possible. But I hear about like, you know, the blossom trust here. So we want to see the survey before it goes out. My hesitancy also on your motion is just kind of like the vagueness of like having other people review it. Because I don't want it to become like this huge project that everybody gets input in. And then the survey becomes something that actually isn't as useful because it had so much input. And so for me, the, you know, I.
Do you want to be more specific on who would review besides the advisory board?
If you have it, yeah.
I would say the senior staff of the Friends of the Library and the Library Foundation and the advisory board to all. Kind of, you know, just that small group to, to review it and make suggestions or ask for clarification. Or address what might be missed.
Okay, so you're amending the motion?
I am amending the motion.
Okay. Do we need a second on an amendment of a motion?
I believe you do.
Okay, is there one?
I'll second.
Okay, any more discussion?
Or some new motion?
That we, that the survey not go live on September 30th. But rather that the draft of this, of the community survey be circulated to the advisory board. And the senior staff at the library friends groups and the foundation for feedback, clarifications. Or are there things that we missed?
Were you saying senior staff, exactly branch managers?
No, I said the friends of friends groups and the foundation. I don't know, I don't want to interfere with the hierarchy of what happens in the library system. Because you've got senior staff already involved.
Rebecca?
I guess my, my concern is, once it gets disseminated in its, in its form like that. Then we don't know where it goes. I guess we, once we open it up, we open it up to everyone. Just like what we saw with the, the initial report, it got disseminated before it was ready. And then people took it as true. So I guess I, I'm just cautious of opening it up to way too many audiences. At the, while it's still in the draft form.
Would you amend your motion to say just the library advisory board?
Well, I think that the foundation and friends should have some, their major stakeholders in the library district. I feel like they should at least be included along with the size reported.
Okay, and again, all we can do is advise?
Yeah, that's, it's all, I'm, I'm just suggesting. Before it goes live to the public, it gets advertised through social media and everything. That it's like, that is, you know, it's like, I don't know.
If I'm ready to.
True, is that what you'd please feel better?
Yes.
Okay.
How many are?
Sure. Well, I don't know that we should do it now because I.
I think you'll see that it, there's nothing innocuous about it.
No, 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 you want it to be innocuous.
I want it to be, I want it to be opened and I want people to, don't, I don't want people to feel like it's. I mean, don't ask them for their best blueberry pie recipe and then say, here's the recipe you need to follow.
I, I'm definitely afraid of another leak, but at the same time, you know, we're asking for transparency, but we're trying to keep it hidden.
I mean, if you just, but the whole thing about same draft and.
Let me just give you.
Oh, and we did that, yeah.
You can send it to you so you can project.
I think you're going to be able to connect now from my.
Can I make another, because I didn't do my five minutes presentation, I asked a lot of questions. I would like to also ask. I don't think that. Obviously. Everybody from the meeting.
Yeah.
Can you just?
Please. Wait, seven tomorrow, we have a meeting.
It's short, I can say.
We're voting now.
Yeah, so the first question is, how often do you, and it's bit into A and B. Visit a Pima County Public Library location in person or visit a Pima County Public Library website? And then it has every day, at least once a week, at least once a month, blah, blah, blah. The next one is, which of the following library locations have you visited in person within the past? And actually, these should be three months. This is not the most current, sorry about that. And then it has all the libraries listed, so whatever they need. And then the next one is. Which of the following library locations do you visit most often? In the past three months, how often have you or others in your household, then each of them following through the libraries? Checked out a print book, checked out an ebook, checked out an audio book, checked out a DVD, used reference materials, downloaded the streaming materials through the library website? Use science kits, use telescopes, use blood pressure kits? And then again, it's not at all once or twice, three or four, more than five times. In the past month, how often have you or others in your household, I'm sorry, in the past three months? How often have you or others in your household participated in the following types of programming provided by the libraries? Children or youth focused programming, adult education or training, book clubs, author talks? And again, gives options of how often they've done that. In the past three months, how often have you or someone in your household used the following facilities or resources out of Pima County Public Library location? Meeting rooms, studying rooms, performance spaces, children's rooms, cooling center, actually took cooling centers out, sorry. Restrooms, computer printers, internet access. Section two, thinking of the materials you rely on at the Pima County Public Library. Which of the following are the most important to you? Print books, ebooks, audio books, DVDs, reference materials, downloading and streaming, science kits, telescopes, blood pressure kits? Thinking of the programming you rely on, Pima County Public Libraries to provide, which of the following are the most important to you? Again, has children, youth programming, adult education or training, book clubs, author talks? Thinking of the facilities and resources you rely on, on Pima, in Pima County Public Libraries to provide. Which are the following are the most important to you? Meeting rooms, studying rooms, performance spaces, children's rooms, cooling centers, restrooms, computers, printers, internet access? Then there's the section of looking ahead. Pima County Public Library is expanding our reach into the community beyond the physical space of individual library locations. How likely would you be to use each of the following resources for accessing library materials if they were available in your community? Book lockers, bookmobile, pop-up libraries and 24/7 kiosks. And those each have descriptions of what they are, so people will know. How far would you travel for a library that takes, library programming that takes place at a public library? Other than the one you visit most often, less than a mile, one to two miles, three to five miles, six to 10 miles, 11 to 15 miles? More than 15 miles or not public local, and we added, would not travel to another library. How far would you travel for library programming that takes place in another community location outside of libraries? Like maybe centers or schools, and again, have the miles that they can travel. And then there's a whole section of demographics that's like gender, race, age, income, marital status, kids at home, employment status. And then there's actually one around housing, whether they're housed around.
And then an open comment.
And then open, is there anything else you'd like to tell us?
But I ask that when you're listing like how people use the library, some people just go in to sit and read the newspaper periodically. I mean, just to, you know, relax. I don't think that periodicals just, you know, relax.
To be fair, that's not the most updated, and we did actually just, just for that. Yeah, we just like, I just come in and use something already in the library, so.
So I think a lot.
Yeah, we do that, exactly. Did capture that. All right, you still want your motion?
Yes, I do. I.
Any other discussion?
So your motion against this debate.
Laura, can you read us the motion? Because you're going to put in the minutes, right?
Second motion.
Yes, but I don't think I have one because he had a long one.
I guess my, my reviewed one raised that I would like to postpone the survey going live on September 30th. I do have to postpone it for a week or two until we can all review it and give comments.
I think it was a month.
No, I said up to a month, but if to postpone one month, okay. But.
Okay, so that's, everybody clear what we're voting on?
Yes.
Great, all those in favor? Okay, Rebecca was an I. All those opposed? Abstentions? Okay, Maria, sorry, we missed you. What was your vote? I, okay, all right. Motion carries. Any other closing remarks?
One thing about the survey, you know, if the library decides to go in the direction that I had recommended. Which is to actually have a formal process, which would have probably a planning committee, which would include maybe business owners, people from different demographic groups. Definitely libraries, they have, you know, be a representative group of the community. That room might want to do his own survey. So just throwing that out there. If you, if you decide that you want to go in that way with a formal planning process. And that, in that case, you might want to wait until they do the survey, rather than have, again, a whole group doing it.
I mean, I just think.
I'm just in favor of this one, come to anybody's possible.
I understand. I do think they are using a formal planning process. I just think there's a difference of opinion of which planning process they should have used. I'll take a motion for an adjournment because I do believe we have put rid of everything on our agenda. Thank you, Craig. Okay, everyone, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, can I just make sure that Laura knows what your motion was for the minute? Please, don't forget your parking tickets because we won't be able.